All right, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all very much for your patience. My apologies. Our board was running just a few minutes late in our prior closed session meeting, but we are delighted to be with you for one of the most enjoyable ways we can gather and celebrate. We are going to reconvene officially at this time. We are then at item number five, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will ask if you're able to please stand and join us as we are leading the pledge today by County Supervisor Dave Cortezzi. Mr. Cortezzi?
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. That takes us to item number six, which is to consider recommendations relating to various certificates of appreciation and commendations and proclamations. And this is the actual vote on these items, colleagues. These are items six A through G. We have a motion to approve from Supervisor Wasserman. I'm going to see if we can get a second. That's good. Thank you for the second, Supervisor Cortezzi. And I'll ask all of my colleagues now to please vote on their screens if that is possible. We'll ask our musical accompanist if she could or he could hit the right switch, please. And we are waiting on just one of our colleagues. And now all votes have been cast. We'll display the results. And I'm pleased to announce that items six A through G have all been approved on a 5-0 vote, as indicated on the screen overhead. So now it is time for us to actually present some of those ceremonial proclamations and resolutions. And I'm going to begin by walking down to the podium, colleagues. And one moment, please. How often do you hear nice people say nice things about lawyers? Today you do, because today we get to share with you that the American Bar Association, which annually awards the Hudson Award to recognize sustained outstanding performance by a public sector law office, has stepped up. And I should tell you that the award is not an award for an individual, but as I mentioned very specifically, it is to recognize the most exceptional public sector law offices in the United States, which is done on an annual basis. And we are pleased to announce that in receiving this award, the service provided by our county council's office has been recognized by the American Bar Association as, quote, "outstanding, significant, and above the call of duty," end quote. So how about a round of applause? The resolution, which I'm going to present in just a moment, recognizes our Office of the County Council for its receipt of the Hudson Award. For those of you who are not familiar with their good work, I should tell you that the Office of the County Council has nearly 210 employees, including about 104 attorneys, in addition, obviously, to their administrative and support staff. The Office of the County Council really does represent public service at its finest. And I can tell you that our board has pushed them to go above and beyond over these last few difficult years on the national scene, and they have never let us down. They have always stepped up to face the challenge during a very difficult time. The Office, while we think of it, you know, as a legal representative, as our lawyers, really is there to improve people's lives and ensure that the critical safety network that we do is available to all of our county residents. So let me just ask that -- we ask Mr. Williams, if you will come down, say a few words about this award. And once again, we want to congratulate you on the receipt of the Hudson Award. This is not a small thing, and the work you do is not a small thing, so it is appropriate that you are recognized in this way. Mr. Williams, will you join us at the podium?
Thank you, President Semidion, members of the board. And it's really an honor to be recognized by the American Bar Association for the outstanding work that the County Council's office does each and every day across all of our different sections. We are fortunate in being able to touch upon all of the work that the county does, both in litigation and advice, both defensive and affirmative work. I am very privileged to lead an office of such talented, hardworking, exceptional attorneys and staff. It is a great honor, and it's also a privilege to be able to work under the leadership, political leadership, of this Board of Supervisors that has provided our office with resources needed to do our work, but also with the support to take on the Trump administration, to bring other affirmative litigation, and to challenge us with tackling innovative ordinances and policies, and to be creative and problem solvers in how we approach the practice of law. It's something that we strive very hard to live up to every day, to have the trust of the board and all of the departments and elected officials that we serve here in the county. And we very much appreciate that the board has always unanimously supported the incredible work that the Office does and how our office is an important component of the work that the county does to serve this community. So I want to thank the board. We thank the ABA, obviously, for the recognition, but I also really want to thank the hardworking, dedicated staff of the Office. They're the ones being recognized by the ABA. Thank you.
I want to call some folks up in just a minute. You should always listen to your legal counsel, though, and you may have seen a brief word pass between us as Mr. Williams came up, and he whispered in my ear, "You're slurring your D. It sounds like a B. It is the Hudson Award." So let me go on record, making sure that I didn't sound like the Hobson Award if I meant to say the Hudson Award. That being said, if you are part of the County Council's office, would you please raise your hand so everybody can see you and say thank you? And now, I'd like to ask you to come forward and be part of the presentation. And I see some of you shaking your heads, and let me just, let's say, you know, sorry if you didn't dress up today. That was your bad call. Come on up and be part of the photo op. Kavita, come on. I says, "Let's go, folks." Give them a little gentle encouragement, please.
So, Joe, as Supervisor Semidion, as folks are coming forward, first of all, I'm going to ask my colleagues to, we're all going to join you down there, but as folks are coming forward, I wanted to just share my own reflections of working with county council. We have asked you to do difficult, sometimes impossible, work, and you have done it with grace, dignity, and under timelines that are unbelievable. You've helped us buy hospitals, protect children. We have the best living wage policy in the country. We have one of the strongest project labor agreements in the country. You helped us dive into pay equity, and I, just as one member of the board, would like to say just how very, very proud I am of all of the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
We need you to organize yourselves across the row here. We don't want all those folks out there to think, "Really? We're trusting these people? They can't organize a photo." So come on.
President Semidion?
Please.
President Semidion?
Yes.
I think you have a couple other members. Just wanted to make a quick comment, if we may. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. I just want to say to everybody that's out there, as a supervisor, we have aides that are responsible for all the different departments in the county. And every single week, at least one of my aides is interacting with a member from county council, if it's parks or hospitals, roads, whatever it is, land use, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Every single week, we have interaction, and I've been doing that for nine years. And every single time, we've got top-level response, knowledge, options, suggestions. I give all of you an A+. You're 100% awesome for my entire nine years here. Thank you very much.
Through the board, President, this is Supervisor Dave Cortezzi speaking on the microphone. I don't even know where to begin, other than to say that you were all already doing a great job. And before the last presidential election, since that time, I think we've all just been absolutely amazed. And I say that knowing that not all of you work on issues of national significance for us, but because of the fact that you've, as a team, had to take that on, it means that everybody, everybody has stepped up, next person up. And we see that, and we recognize it. And when I heard that you got this award, and it has such national significance, I was actually choked up a little bit by it. was actually choked up a little bit by it, because to know that the rest of the community out there now has the validation to appreciate you as much as we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will, it's Susan Ellenberg. I will close out my colleagues' comments with some admiration of my own. I've had the opportunity over my first seven months here to work with many of you, and every single one of you with whom I have engaged has taught me, has helped me understand the county better, has convinced me that you are all absolutely working in pursuit of truth and justice. And it's truly exhilarating. I really am impressed with the work that this office does, thrilled to be a part of it in this way. I'll share that when I moved here in 1991, I interviewed with Ann Ravel, who was county council. And perhaps to my own dismay, I didn't take the job because I didn't fully understand what county council was and what it meant. And now, maybe when I'm done with sitting on this side of the dais, I can come and work for you all and fix that.
In a minute, the photographer is going to tell us that you can't go that wide, which is why I'm going to ask you all to huddle in. Huddle in. Huddle in. Please look like you enjoy working with one another. There you go. That's good. All right. How we going? I'm thinking of all the billable hours that were just up here. So, thank you for that. How about one more round of applause for really a talented group of professionals? And one other opportunity that I'm privileged to have today is the opportunity to represent our Board of Supervisors in proclaiming this month, August 2019, as American Muslim Appreciation Month. And let me ask those who are here to celebrate this occasion, please come forward at this time, if you're here for American Muslim Appreciation Month. I think many of you will know, but for those who do not, the Muslim community has really thrived here in Santa Clara County for a great many years, and is itself one of the most diverse subgroups here in the county. We know that our county, which is one of the most diverse in the nation, is truly stronger by virtue of its diversity, and that the different cultures, including the different religions that thrive here, strengthen not just our community, but our economy, quite frankly, as well. I think we also know, however, that without understanding the diverse members of our community, misconceptions can and do abound. Some of you will know that to dispel those misconceptions, I've hosted several Understanding Islam forums in my district. Thank you to those of you who have participated and made those successful. I should tell you all that at these forums, where we get literally 400, 500 people who come not once, not twice, but three times to learn more about their friends and their neighbors and their colleagues, the panelists not only clarify the basics of Islam, but also share the significant diversity that exists within the modern practice of Islam. And sometimes they'll even respectfully disagree with one another, which makes for a lively conversation. The forums, as I say, are always packed, showing that there really is a desire in this county to learn more about Islam and what it means to be a Muslim in Santa Clara County and around the world. The Muslim community has added so much to this county culturally, economically, and through acts of service as well. So today's proclamation is an affirmation to our Santa Clara County residents that they are more than simply residents, they're also our brothers and sisters, our neighbors, our bosses, our employees, and our friends, and that we, as a county, are proud to count you as part of our community.
Can I just say a word as well?
And let me first invite Atar Siddiqui to say a few words in appreciation of American Muslim Appreciation Month, and then we will go to other members who have a word to say as well. So, please. Thank you. Please join us in welcoming our guests.
Thank you very much. My name, as Supervisor Semitian mentioned, is Atar Siddiqui. I'm the chairman of the board of the South Bay Islamic Association, which features the longest-running mosque in the South Bay area, as well as one of the largest mosques in the Bay Area. President Semitian, Supervisors Ellenberg, Cortezzi, Wasserman, and Chavez, on behalf of the Muslim community of the Bay Area, thank you very much for this acknowledgement and proclamation of August as being Muslim Appreciation Month. Needless to say, in these challenging, very challenging and concerning times during which even our own federal administration seems to be fanning the flames of divisiveness and polarization, Muslims throughout the U.S. are attacked, demonized, and scapegoated on a regular basis, simply due to their choice of faith. But the Muslims of Santa Clara County do not feel that way nearly to the same extent because of this and other local bodies, whose deeds and words reflect a much more tolerant, inclusive, and welcoming environment to all its residents, irrespective of their ethnicity, background, and, yes, religion. While those elements that seek to terrace Americans apart attempt to paint a picture of their own definition of us versus them, what they fail to realize is we're all us, meaning people of conscience are a heterogeneous block of individuals of all colors, shapes, and sizes, and walks of life. The Muslim community of Santa Clara County comprises doctors, lawyers, engineers, teachers, members of the police force, Army veterans, you name it. In fact, several of those occupations are reflected here on stage with me or in the audience. We've chosen to live in this county because we believe it to be the greatest county on earth, and we want to help in improving our surroundings for the betterment of all by addressing issues that are important to every one of us, issues such as the quality of our schools, the conditions of our roads, and whether or not the 49ers can keep their quarterback healthy for the entire season. Not necessarily in that order, by the way, for some of us. So it is through these actions that, such as this proclamation, that the county is showing true leadership, is standing up to the enemies of peace and justice, and stating unequivocally that we recognize Muslims, we welcome their presence, and we're grateful for their contributions toward helping further strengthen this great county. I once again would like to express the Muslim community's appreciation to the Board of Supervisors of this recognition. Thank you all for joining us today, and reinforce how fortunate and blessed we feel to be living in an area whose leadership is principled and committed to the well-being of all its residents. Thank you very much.
I'm not on the program at all, but I thought it would be worthwhile to mention that there are about 15 mosques in Santa Clara County. Not all of them are represented here. You have a few of the leaders here that took time out of probably their days off to be here, and the reason for that is that yesterday was a major holiday for Muslims around the world. It was Eid al-Adha, or Festival of the Sacrifice, which commemorates the trials of the Prophet Abraham that we share with Jews and Christians, of course. And Eid al-Adha comes after a period of Hajj, which is one of the five pillars of Islam, and it is a period of time in which Muslims who are able to make pilgrimage to Mecca, and the entire pilgrimage commemorates the trials of the Prophet Abraham, his wife Hajar, and the rest of his family. And so this is why you don't see a lot of Muslims here representing, you know, the 15 mosques that are in the Bay Area, but we're grateful that you have this event and this appreciation by all of the Board of Supervisors. So thank you.
Let us turn our backs on you briefly for a photo, and we will be right back. And one more, hang on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I did, I'd like to make a couple of points.
And one more word.
Yeah. I'd like to make a couple of points. I'm also on the Human Rights Commission from District III, so I'd like to commend the Board of Supervisors for recognizing the Muslim Unity Month. They did that last year also, so it's, you know, it's great that they're doing that. I really commend them for taking this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you again. And now, as part of our ceremonial presentations, it gives me pleasure to turn to my colleague, Supervisor Chavez. And Supervisor Chavez, I will let you announce the next presentation.
Good afternoon. Try it again, just, we're going to be honoring people today. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm so excited to be here with you.
We're so excited.
Great. So I get the privilege, on behalf of my colleagues, of presenting a proclamation declaring August 2019 as Child Support Awareness Month in Santa Clara County. So I wanted to invite Ignacio De La Fuente down, and also, Guerrero, I'm sorry. Ignacio Guerrero, and also, Ignacio, do you have anyone with you? All right. Ignacio is going to be representing his department today. For those of you who don't know, Child Support Service is an essential function in helping our county's children become healthy, productive, and well-adjusted adults. And as Chair of the Children, Seniors, and Families Committee, I can attest to the good work the department does on a daily basis to ensure the best outcomes for children and families. In the past year alone, staff was able to collect over $92 million of child support payments. And what's important about that is those are services that children would have otherwise needed to get from our social services agency, but they're getting them from their families. This department serves more than 50,000 children annually with an appreciation that each case represents a family in our community. The staff is very dedicated to working with both parents in the best interests of the child, and they highly encourage any parent who may be unclear of what their options are available to them as a custodial, non-custodial parent, to come to them to have those conversations. So with that, I'm going to present this proclamation. You will applaud, applause wildly. Woo! All right. And the mic, you want to say a couple of words?
Thank you very much. I would like to say a couple of words. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for declaring August Child Support Awareness Month. This is a special time of the year for our department, particularly because we get to recognize the staff that do all the work behind the scenes. So on behalf of the Department of Child Support Services here in Santa Clara County, on behalf of the California Department of Child Support Services, I'd like to accept the proclamation on behalf of the 217 staff that we have back at the office, which includes child support caseworkers, legal clerks, accounting staff, clerical support staff, attorneys, court staff that work diligently every day to ensure that children receive the financial support that they're legally and morally entitled to receive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all, and one more round of applause for all the people who do all that good work, Supervisor Ellenberg, could we call on you for our next presentation, please? And Supervisor Ellenberg will be followed by Supervisor Wasserman, who has a pair of presentations to make today.
All right. What do I have coming up with me today? Public... We are going to stay on the subject of children for a moment and go back even littler. No shyness allowed. Yay. Definitely no shyness. We're talking about breastfeeding here. I will start by saying that breast milk provides optimal nutrition for the growth and development of infants, providing advantages to not only the infant, but also to moms, families, and society. Breast milk produces nutritional, immunological, developmental, psychological, social, economic, and environmental benefits. Breastfeeding is less expensive and produces less waste than formula feeding. If I sound like a commercial, that's good. The Surgeon General's call to action to encourage a society-wide approach to support moms and babies is a major asset to expanding awareness of the values of breastfeeding. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that infants be exclusively breastfed during the first six months of life, followed by continued breastfeeding with the introduction of complementary foods. Breastfeeding can continue for one year or longer, as mutually decided by both mom and infant. Breastfeeding is recognized by major medical and health organizations, including the California Department of Public Health, the California Breastfeeding Coalition, Office of Women's Health, the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, and the World Health Organization. Three Santa Clara County hospitals, El Camino Las Gatos, St. Louis Hospital in Gilroy, and Santa Clara Valley Medical Center in San Jose have successfully implemented the 10 steps to successful breastfeeding and have received baby-friendly hospital designations. Yay. As such, with credit to the tremendous work of our public health department... That's where you are, if I'm right. There you go. Making sure. All from all different? Tell me where everybody's from. Let's get this right.
Santa Clara Valley Medical Center.
BMC?
BMC.
BMC?
BMC.
BMC?
California Whig Association.
Whi?
Public Health.
Public Health?
Public Health.
All right. All of them are here. To accept designation, recognition for two designations. The first is that August 2019 is declared Baby Friendly Designated Awareness Month, and the month of August was declared by the United States Breastfeeding Committee on August 6 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. So thank you to all of you who work on promoting this very important social determinant of health, and that's it. I really appreciate all of you, and we've got a plaque and a photo. We're going to have to figure out who keeps it. Oh, that's been decided. There you go. Okay, so we're going to turn this way.
Sorry. I'm the one who holds it.
So you go right in the front of the middle there.
You guys are all important. Couldn't do without all of you. Maybe one person come on up here, or we'll be fine. Are we good?
If you listen to her, she makes you look great, trust me on this, okay? Just, thank you one more time, everybody, really, much appreciated. Thank you, Supervisor Ellenberg. And let me ask Supervisor Wasserman, if you will step up now. He's got a pair of presentations that we're pleased to hear.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Chief Laura Garnett to come forward, along with members of the probation department, pretrial services, local 1587, and anybody else that's part of the great collaboration that makes things happen. Welcome, chief.
Good to see you too. Have a fun day.
Yes. These are the fun days. These are the fun days. So, we've got a commendation, pre-trial probation and parole. Two Ps. Got it?
We're going to have two of the Ps here today.
Okay, yes. That's true. Anyway, if you can join me right up here, Chief Garnett.
I'm going to have Mark Murray since he's the president of the Officers Union also here.
Do that there. All right, there. Whereas, the American Probation and Parole Association promotes Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Supervision Week, PPPS Week, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with, as an annual celebration with the goal of raising awareness about the incredible work that community correction professionals do every day. Whereas, the County of Santa Clara Probation Department strives to promote community safety by implementing proven strategies, while the Office of Pre-Trial Services strives to be a national leader, and it does accomplish that, in the reduction of inappropriate detention by using and developing safe, innovative, and proven alternatives to incarceration. And whereas, probation and pre-trial services staff uphold public safety and justice by offering the essential services to clients who are engaged with the justice system in Santa Clara County. Whereas, probation and pre-trial services staff are highly skilled professionals who work tirelessly to safeguard the community from crime while helping clients who are engaged with the justice system obtain self-sufficiency to ensure successful rehabilitation and reintegration into society. And whereas, probation and pre-trial services staff are true change agents for positive change and advocates for community and restorative justice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Clara does hereby honor and proclaim the week of July 21st through 27th, which I hope you enjoyed, as Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Supervision Week.
First off, we have probation staff in the audience that could come up.
Yes, absolutely.
Doctor Child.
Come on.
Don't be shy.
Come on, no, all of you.
Come on, everybody.
All of you. Craig.
You're here.
We are so very appreciative to the Board of Supervisors and the county administration for recognizing the staff who work so hard each and every day to help people change their lives, make victims whole, and do our part to keep our community safe. Most people have no idea what a pre-trial or probation officer actually does, well, they do a lot. They work with children and adults, in institutions, in offices, and in the community, and we are working towards the long game. We come in after a person has been arrested or cited for a crime and are often in their lives for a long time, years, sometimes many years. So, our staff have to build relationships and walk through that journey with our clients and families. They do so professionally and many times have been the main person who helped the clients heal and repair the harm their behavior caused to others. We have staff in all areas of the county and from all different sectors. So, we have a robust, in addition to operating juvenile hall in the James Ranch and adult probation and juvenile probation, we also have a robust fiscal unit, services unit, research and development unit, contracts unit, and more that I'm not remembering. So, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Let's turn around and give a quick shout out. Do we have a typo? Are we okay? We're good, okay. Good. Good, good, good. Now, I'd like to invite Mr. Stan Tisch to come forward. Anybody else you want to bring with you, Stan? All right, this is for you. This is all about you. This is an incredible man. Let me share a little bit about what makes him so incredible and the lifetime of service to the county. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
You betcha, you betcha. Whereas, Stan Tisch was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to the Santa Clara County Assessment Appeals Board in 1996, and has been chairperson of the Assessments Appeals Board since 1998. He's been chairperson for the last 20 years. Whereas, Stan Tisch is a member of the Appraisal Institute and has more than 20 years' experience in forensic appraisal, appraisal review, and property tax assessment appeals. Whereas, Stan has addressed various issues regarding the performance appraisals for Assessment Appeals and appeal application and hearing procedures. Whereas, and listen to these numbers, Stan Tisch has ably served the County of Santa Clara overseeing more than 250 Assessment Appeals Board value hearings, has heard more than 20,000 appeal matters, and has engaged in more than 50 special hearings involving Silicon Valley companies. Whereas, Stan has provided over 20 years of excellent service to the County of Santa Clara, and during that time has demonstrated diligent professionalism in an Assessment Appeals, as an Assessment Appeals Chairperson. Whereas, Stan Tisch, by his experience and expertise, provided exceptional service to the County of Santa Clara by assisting the community in making informed and professional decisions regarding fair property tax assessments. And if there's anyone in this room that doesn't know the committee, the board, the role that Stan serves on and has chaired for 20 years, a lot of times, the appeals, the tax appeals, the tax assessments, people appeal that number. And we're going through a lot with high-tech companies right now, but the dollar amounts involved are huge and a huge part of our budget. And it's been Stan and his leadership role as Chair of the Committee to make sure that the numbers assessed to an individual organization over the last 22 years were justified and fair, and he has done an extraordinarily ethical and exceptional job doing that. Let's give a round of applause, please.
The appreciation is appreciated. My appointment gave me the opportunity to employ professional skills that I had spent years acquiring outside of a work environment and in service to the county and its citizens, and that was very gratifying throughout the whole time. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wasserman, and congratulations to all of the good folks who were recipients of these various commendations and proclamations today. It stacks up a little when we're away, but it's also a nice opportunity to realize just how many people are doing good work in so many different venues. And that means we are now able to move to item number eight, which is to present certificates of appreciation for Employee Excellence, excuse me, Employee Excellence Award honorees for August of 2019. And Mr. Miguel Marquez, our chief operating officer, will handle that pleasant duty today. Mr. Marquez, the podium is yours.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor. Let me invite our excellent employees to come up. There are eight or nine of you, I'm not sure. Come on up, please, and let's give them a very warm round of applause. As they come up, let me just say a couple of words that what a terrific way to kick off this new fiscal year. We come back from our vacations, we have a meaningful set, an important set of commendations to give out, like, we heard some amazing stories today, and now we get to close out this program with the Employee Excellence Award for August. And while we were away, I think we all know, having paid attention to the news, there was a terrible tragedy in Gilroy. But I don't want to focus on that, we'll talk about that more tomorrow, but what I will say is that tragedy showed on a grand scale how excellent our employees really are. I think back to what happened a couple of weeks ago, and people stepped up. Everybody just contributed, were calling, what can I do to help? I just made a quick list. Departments involved, the Sheriff's Office did tremendous work, the DA's office did tremendous work, our emergency medical services transporting people to our hospital and clinics, the hospitals themselves, amazing work, our behavioral health services department, not just on the day of the tragedy, but ever since, we've been providing services, our Office of Emergency Management, our Director of Facility Security, who stepped up and did amazing work, even our Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency was right there trying to help us get through the issue. County Council, as always, back, supporting everybody doing this incredible work, the medical examiner, coroner, and so many others. So, that shows how excellent we are as a group of employees, 22,000 strong stepping up when it mattered most. So, today, we're here to honor and recognize, I see, eight of you, so why don't we move right to it? And let me start by calling up first Christina Luna. Christina has a hurt foot, a boot. So, Christina has been with the county for 13 years. She is a library circulation supervisor at the county library system. So, excellent customer service and a passion for people can be seen throughout Christina's performance as the circulation supervisor for the Campbell Library. Over the past year, Christina assumed a lead role on two impactful projects greatly benefiting the public. The library recently adopted unit-based teams to collaboratively improve performance, and Christina served as a co-lead for one of the first projects, solving the challenge of how to reduce wait times for material the public has requested, including materials supporting students. Well, I can't tell you how important that is because I think all of us, one thing we share is we hate to wait. So, to take that on, it's excellent work. Christina's creativity and dedication supported the team as they collected data, developed best practices, trained staff, and collaborated with IT to generate enhanced reporting tools. Under her collaborative leadership, the team has significantly reduced wait times. Christina has also helped expand library access by leading implementation of an additional day of service. The Campbell Library had been closed on Sundays, traditionally one of the most popular days for visiting the library. Christina helped develop a schedule and hired and trained new staff to expand to seven days of service, which resulted in significant increase in borrowing activity and in library use. Beyond these impactful projects, Christina addressed the myriad operational issues daily confronting her team through exceptional coaching and mentoring. The public continuously praises Christina for her excellent customer service. Today, I'm glad we can take this moment to praise her. On a personal note, Christina loves visiting the beach and exploring museums and parks with her children. She has always enjoyed working at the library because of the people she works with and the projects she gets to work on that enhance library services for the community. Congratulations and thank you for all you do for the county. Our next awardee is Tina Hopkins. Tina has been with the county for 19 years. She is a Clerk Recorder Office Specialist III with the Finance Agency. Tina has been a valuable asset since she joined the Clerk Recorder's Office back in 2000. Currently, working in the Vital Records Division, Tina always gives her best when providing customer service, and she demonstrates innovation by proposing solutions to better serve county customers. She exhibits flexibility, mutual respect, and courtesy by helping her coworkers in other divisions when they need help. Tina has worked in all areas of the department, and her vast knowledge and commitment to efficient, effective, and quality service are apparent when assisting the public. When issuing marriage licenses and performing marriage ceremonies, she ensures that each couple receives thorough instructions in the most genuine, joyful ceremony. Customer comments from Yelp reviews and surveys regarding interactions with Tina indicate that she is, quote, "outstanding, polite, helpful, understanding, friendly, and funny." I've seen many reviews on Yelp to get those comments, that's something special. That's something... So, her supervisors describe her as caring, compassionate, and fiercely loyal. Tina is a shining example of an employee who plays a vital role in carrying out the department's and the county's mission and vision. Tina and her husband of 10 years have three daughters and one son. She has a passion for photography, and her dream vacation is Fiji. So, let's give Tina a warm round of applause. Thank you so much, Martha. We really appreciate it. The next recipient of this award is Jeanette Nunez. So, Jeanette has five years of service with the county as a sheriff's technician in the office of the sheriff. Jeanette serves as a, in the Hall of Justice, where she frequently shows her commitment to efficient, quality service, and her support for the community. Recently, Jeanette learned about a fourth grader named Sophie, who was diagnosed with stage IV brain cancer. Jeanette began following Sophie's story on social media and was inspired to do something special. She shared Sophie's story and her passion to help with members of the sheriff's office and academy recruits. Through Jeanette's efforts, she was able to raise over $6,200 in less than one week. Jeanette used the money to send Sophie and her family to Disneyland before Sophie was scheduled to start her intensive medical procedures. Jeanette and the academy staff also coordinated a school visit at Sophie's school with over 60 uniform deputies. During the visit, over 700 students were able to personally interact with the sheriff's office personnel, and Sophie was surprised with an all-expense-paid trip to Disneyland. This was a memorable day for Sophie and her fellow students, all because of Jeanette's aspirations to bring joy and cancer awareness. Jeanette's personal effort to make all of this possible was commendable and consistent with the high standards placed upon sheriff's office employees. On a personal note, Jeanette enjoys working out, hiking, and traveling with her husband. She loves spending time with family and friends and is currently attending school to become a registered nurse. You know she's going to be an amazing nurse. And also, today, I understand we have in the audience Sophie. Is that right? There's Sophie there. Let's give Sophie a big round of applause. Sophie, come on up over here. And I have some, members of the Board of Supervisors would like to present some things to you.
So, Sophie, everybody who comes gets a commendation from us, and I'm going to let Supervisor Wasserman read it to you. It's very fancy.
She's got the fun stuff.
I do.
Sophie, excuse me, Sophie. Your caring and loving heart is appreciated by all whose lives you have touched. The bravery you demonstrate every day is a beacon of strength which enriches our world. We thank you for your positive attitude, your energy, and your spirit that continues to inspire others in the face of adversity. And what all that means is you're awesome. You are awesome. Can I give you a hug?
And so, this is a gift from the Board of Supervisors. Do you know what a Fennec Fox is? You're going to learn a lot about him. So, that's from all of us, and we're just, we're just here just to say, thank you for being such an inspiration.
How about one more round of applause for Sophie, please? We're going to ask the entire board to turn around, take the...
Can we get a picture with you both?
Is that okay?
That's kind of overwhelming. Oh, sorry. There we go. There we go.
Our next award recipient, Danielle Snell Martinez. Danielle has four years of service with the county, she's a Correctional Deputy with the Department of Correction. So Deputy Danielle Snell Martinez has been assigned to the Training and Compliance Division since December of 2018. As a recruit training officer, Danielle has played a pivotal role in developing, training, and mentoring over 100 recruits from various agencies. Danielle is reliable, enthusiastic, and hardworking. As a recor, I'm sorry, as a recruit training officer, Deputy Snell Martinez has improved the quality of training at the Justice Training Center. She offers her invaluable experience as a jail training officer to help create scenarios with realistic expectations for the recruits. These scenarios allow recruits to develop critical thinking, command presence, and interpersonal communication skills. Danielle understands that our employees are our most valued assets. She is passionate about training and developing our deputies. Her dedication to the Sheriff's Office has helped Santa Clara County maintain the standard of having one of the best academies in the state. Actually, I'm going to go off script here and say it's not one of the best, it is the best in the state. Danielle is married to her husband, Sheriff's Deputy Abraham Martinez. They have a two-year-old son, Aiden, and three dogs. Danielle was born into law enforcement. Her mother and stepmother are also deputies with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, and her father is a recently retired correctional officer. She strives to be a good role model to her three siblings and is grateful for the family's support. Congratulations to Danielle. Next, I'd like to call up Morena Cruz. Morena has 11 years of service with the county. She currently serves as a Senior Management Analyst in the Probation Department. So Morena is a social worker by training and brings an invaluable amount of knowledge regarding youth and best practices. This experience, paired with comprehensive analytical skills, creates a blend of practical and academic attributes which Morena employs to great effect for the probation department. Morena is a valuable resource for developing programs, data systems, and program evaluations. Her deep desire to help others and the community makes Morena stand out to her coworkers. Morena often seeks to implement changes to increase efficiency and make the most of resources that are available. Through a diverse range of projects, Morena works with many stakeholders, building strong relationships based on honesty, integrity, and respect. Her colleagues have said the following about her. Quote, "Morena is diligent and thoughtful in fulfilling her duties. Her work is always of the highest quality and accuracy." Quote, "Morena is awesome, reliable, and efficient in her collaboration with system partners. She always has a willingness to learn and be creative in tackling problems with appropriate solutions." And finally, quote, "Morena doesn't shy away from challenges. She has a get-it-done attitude and will not stop until things are complete." Please join me in congratulating Morena for her strong work ethic and her commitment to service. Next, we have Tanya Pham. Tanya has been with the county for 20 years. She currently serves as an Application Decision Support Specialist II in the Social Services Agency. As an SSA Application Decision and Support Specialist with the Program Bureau since 2015, Tanya supports DEB staff, administration, and community partners with policies and procedures related to the Medi-Cal program, which serves almost 400,000 county residents. Tanya works diligently to update the Medi-Cal Eligibility Data System, or otherwise known as MEDS. She creates quick reference guides, provides presentations, and makes sure that stakeholders are aware of ever-changing local, state, and federal regulations that affect daily business processes. Tanya's skill in providing essential information to staff has resulted in a vast improvement of Santa Clara's MEDS accuracy, which is vital to the county's performance in federal and state audits and a key component of great customer service and efficient business practices. In November of 2015, the count of high-priority MEDS alerts was 10,000-plus. As of May 2019, thanks in large part to Tanya's work, that count has been reduced to approximately 2,400. Tanya's work requires her to collaborate with the state and with other counties. She is a strong advocate for the county of Santa Clara at the state level, and her expertise is often sought by other counties. Tanya's reputation shines statewide. She is known for her excellent work, efficiency, and her attention to detail. Tanya has enriched staff, stakeholders, and clients alike through her effectiveness and dedication. Please join us in thanking Tanya for embodying SSA's vision to serve, empower, and transform. Congratulations, Tanya. Next, I'd like to call up Lucia Sloan. So Lucy Sloan has been with the county for seven years as a Program Manager II in the Health and Hospital System, the Valley Medical Center. Lucy is an outstanding public servant. She has demonstrated a real passion for improving access to oral health services for homeless adults and for children in the county. Lucy's expansion of services, her management of resources, and her efforts to ensure quality outcomes for patients has been exceptional. Lucy involves providers, staff, and peers in developing new approaches to oral health. Her design for the county's new mobile unit and for primary care oral health services for foster youth are great examples of this collaborative leadership. Lucy has worked very effectively with VMC administration to improve access to oral health services. She involves community partners to create new ways to access care and has put in long hours to achieve these goals, and all with limited resources. Lucy gets referrals from all over the county and personally works with her network to get children and special needs adult patients the care that they need. She participates in community events that may take place during or after her regular work hours and has developed a reputation across the community as a dependable and a trustworthy partner. Lucy is a pleasure to work with and treats her staff with the respect and values we strive for in Santa Clara County. Thank you, Lucy, for all you do. And I'd like to call up Marla Lipshultz. Marla has been with the county for five years. She works as a Marriage and Family Therapist II for the Health and Hospital System, but for the Behavioral Health Services Department. Marla is a compassionate counselor who is dedicated to her clients. She is highly professional, but with excellent boundaries. Her clinical work is of the highest caliber and is an example that other staff try to emulate. The client population Marla works with has significant issues with addiction, criminal justice involvement, family, and work. Her ability to assist clients in prioritizing life skills issues has assisted them in taking positive incremental steps in developing a lifelong recovery plan. Marla has years of counseling and therapy experience. She uses her skills to communicate in the language and understanding of her clients. Her strength also lies in her ability to work with the physicians and nursing staff of the Methadone Clinic. Work with this client population requires the ability to function across professional disciplines to provide the comprehensive care that is needed. In addition, Marla has excellence, excellent alliance skills with her clients. While she handles many difficult cases, she always shows compassion and acceptance. Marla is nonjudgmental in support of her clients when they are on their, on their journey to sobriety. Equally important is her support of other counseling staff in assisting them in working with their clients and obtaining new clinical strategies. Please join me in thanking and congratulating Marla. And now if you'll excuse us, I think we're going to all gather together and take a picture, all of us, with the board members. Thank you, let's give one more round of applause to all of our award recipients this month. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.